All right, so good evening and welcome to the May 18th Planning Board meeting. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to welcome to Planning Board members. We have Adrienne, Adrienne Michelle, ad hoc member, and then we have Paul Wilson, also a he's a full member of the board. I want to congratulate both of you for taking the time for actually being appointed to the board and I actually, myself and the board are looking forward to work with you, so welcome. So at this point Nancy, can you take attendance please? Nancy, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Narenberg.
Ray, you're muted. Ray, you're muted.
Hey, you're on mute.
Okay, I see he's present, right? Okay. Commissioner Barra?
Present.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Michelle?
You're muted.
Here.
Got it. And Commissioner Wolfson?
Present.
Chairman Leo?
Present.
Very good.
So on this, we have the on this agenda, we have the approval of the meeting minutes dated April 20th. We have 65 Main Street, 151 Marble Dale Road, and 86 Main Street. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th?
Motion approved.
Okay, who who motioned?
David Barra.
I did. Adrian.
Oh, you can't. You cannot. Since you weren't a part of the last meeting, you cannot you cannot motion. It's either got a great motion. Or Dave, can you motion a motion?
Yeah, approved.
Okay. I said.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So at this point, I'd like to call out the one Marble Dale Road, please. Did we lose Mark?
Mark Tremontly of Tremonton Wood for Billwind Development.
So Mark, tell us about your project. If you can share the screen, walk us through your plans.
So at 151 Marble Dale, we propose a the construction of a restaurant that is partially constructed. We are seeking the approval of a shell permit. I will bring up the plans for you momentarily. These were exchanged previously. There with me for a minute. Okay. Can you see these plans on my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, so this property was previously before this board were and was approved as a single story structure. The plans that are on file with the billing department include a penthouse that is essentially a little lobby with a stairwell and an elevator. Those were not depicted necessarily in the rendering, although in the elevations that were presented to the planning board back when, many years ago. So in agreement with the building department, Gary and the town, the village of Tocco, we wanted to bring this before you so that it can be very clear that you had full purview of the plans for the structure as it exists. We have prepared revised plans through our discussions and work sessions that include the penthouse in the renderings. So here on LS 1.0, this is the life safety plan which shows the basement depicting the Steve. If you see my hand here that I am pointing to in the plan, you have the elevator shaft and the stairwell and a rear stairwell. This continues up to the first floor plan with the elevator shaft, a stairwell and a rear stairwell. And and as you see, we have no build out for bars or kitchen or any of those niceties that will be the obligation of a tenant in the future application to the planning board for whatever intended use they may have. We simply we simply seek to provide a vanilla box for a restaurant tenant to come in and build this out to their liking and to your approval. Going up to the roof, you see we now have the penthouse with the stairwell and the continuation of the elevator shaft. And and that's it. And we have the stairwells as well here.
That staircase leads from the roof down to the first block, correct?
Down to grade, yes, sir. And the.
Just show us the elevations. Continue, Mark.
Yes. Sorry, I was skipping. Okay, here is the.
Let's just go to the elevation.
Okay. Here are the north and south elevations.
Um. So on this drawing, just to be clear, you're showing the roof tower, you're showing the staircase, which is on the north elevation on the right hand side. And you're also on the south elevation, you're showing the staircase from the roof on the left side of the drawing and then the the elevator tower in the center there.
Correct. So on the north elevation, the street would be here. And if you were looking at the building, this would be the right side. Here, the street is here. This would be the left side.
Right. And a staircase at the rear of the building, correct?
Correct. Now you see there's bubbles. We made some adjustments to account for code and and landing platforms as per the request of the building department. I think we've met their their desires in terms of code requirements. But you'll see here, the the fascia, everything matches what's on site, the present date, and is accurate and complete.
Okay.
The next elevation shows the west and east elevations. The west here being the rear of the building, here is a stairwell in the rear of the building that is under consideration here tonight along with the penthouse you see here. And then from the front of the building, you see how here we have conformed the design to the existing conditions with this railing configuration as well as the penthouse. Here are elevations of just the penthouse itself from each from each, you know, perspective.
Okay.
And then here are more details on the stairwell itself. So you'll see here that previous concern was that this flight was more than 12 feet. So in order to and which would have required a landing, so we were able to eliminate that flight distance by raising the.
I got it. I got the volume.
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, I don't think that elevation is correct, but the staircase at the bottom is correct, but it's correct and fine.
Okay.
We'll have to build an apartment with that.
So I mean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So my understanding is based on the the work session, the emails and phone calls we've had since then. The scope of the project that you're coming back in front of us for is really just the installation of the elevator staircase from the cellar first floor to the roof level, the addition of a rear staircase and enclosure of the SVE room down in the cellar. Right? So the building, like you said, is a white box. It's with the shell. It the addition of the roof tower will match the does match the current finishes of the the building shelf shelf itself. And that is an extent, the extent of your requests for this board. Now, once we vote on this application, this instead of drawings will go to the building department, the building department will review it for code compliance. And then from there, you'll get your permits. At this point, we're here just to really talk about the staircase tower, two staircases, elevator tower and basement, correct? All right, is anyone, again, I think you've done everything I've asked for. Does anyone on board have any questions?
Okay. No, no, I think you and I spoke, Antonio.
Right, okay. Any of the new members? I know the new members, does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay. Um, so, okay, thank you. Yeah, I think we make a motion to open a public hearing, correct?
That's correct. That's what point we're at. Yep.
Okay, so at this point, take a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone here this evening speaking this application? If so, please identify yourself. All right, since I don't believe anyone is here.
I'm not from the public, but I have something to say. You, when you and Mark were talking about the project, you mentioned the stairs going from the ground floor to the rooftop. But Mark, just clarifying, this also tries to go in front of the board for the stairs going from basement to ground floor as well, right? Those two stairs.
Correct, yeah.
So those two stairs and also the elevator. So nothing else. That's it, right?
Yes, and the roof tower.
Okay, perfect. And the roof tower, exactly.
Okay, so Mark, can you lower the can you stop sharing so we can see everybody? All right, so this, okay, so we close the public hearing?
Yeah, to make a motion, you haven't done that yet.
So at this point, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Come on.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Point, I'd like to make a resolution, be a resolution. The Planning Board, Village of Tocco, New York, in the matter of the application of Billwind Development Affiliates LLC, premises 151 Marble Dale Road, Tocco, New York, applicant, planning board, planning board resolution. The applicant, Billwind Development Affiliates LLC herein applicant is the record owner of the premises commonly known as 151 Marble Dale Road, Tocco, New York, and is known on a tax map of the Village of Tocco as section 35, block, block 1, lot 1A. The premises applicant received approval from this board to construct a restaurant and at set premises. Applicant now seeks to make amendments to its original approval. Applicant is seeking the following amendments: constructing elevated with a rooftop lobby, constructing staircase in the rear of the premises connecting the rooftop with the the ground, construct a SVE equipment room in the basement of the restaurant. The applicant has provided all documents, plans and materials to this board such that the board can make a proper review under section 7-1 and 4-8.8 of the zoning code. Specifically, the following plans and drawing shall be incorporated herein and made part of this approval dated April 14th, 20, revision number seven, dated 5/12/21 and 5/14/21. Drawings A-0.0, A-0.1, A-0.2, A-0.3, A-0.4, 0.5, LS 1.0, LS 1.1, LS 1.2, A-1.0, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5, 2.0, 2.1, 2.2, 3.0, 3-3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 4.0 and 4.1. Based on the submission and the work session and the public hearing, this board determines pursuant to secret that, one, the action herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area of variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and is and it's declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Further, based on the submission and work session, this board finds that the applicant has satisfied the requirements of 7-1 and 4-8.8 and the Village of Tocco zoning code, and therefore the application seeks amendments to original the original decision of this board is approved with the following conditions. Gary, should that read planning board, a zoning board?
Yes.
All right, so we'll have to make corrections to this.
Yeah, I'll make the change.
Okay. This board has not determined nor nor it is the board's purview to determine the compliance of the requested amendments with the New York State local code. The responsibility of determining compliance lies solely with the building inspector of Tocco and must be determined from determined from the building inspector that all New York State and local codes are complied with with prior to a building permit being issued. Two, we acknowledge that one issue that is outstanding is New York State code issue is whether the proposed stair located in the rear must be enclosed or covered. If it is determined by the building inspector that said stair must be enclosed or covered, then the chair of this board may sign off on the design without the applicant submitting the same to the full board. Three, if minor changes are required to this amendment amended site plan due to New York State or local compliance, the chair of the chair of this board may sign off on the minor amendments. If if it is determined by the chair of this board that the change is substantial, the chair may may in his discretion send the applicant back to this board for approval of the substantial change. Four, this application is limited to the requested amendments. If it does not include any occupant or usage in any way on of the rooftop. Once a tenant is identified, the tenant or owner must come back to this board if the rooftop is to be used in any way in the operation of the business. Five, all outstanding fees must be paid prior to a building permit being issued. Six, applicant must submit to the building department three hard copies of the signed financing plans for filing within forty days of this approval dated May 18, 2021. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, Nancy, please take a call role.
Commissioner Narenberg.
I'm still abstaining on this one.
Commissioner Barra?
Or.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Or.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Michelle?
No, she can't vote.
Oh, that's right.
And Commissioner Wilson cannot vote.
And okay, so Chairman Leo?
In favor. All right, guys, thank you very much. Mark, I appreciate all your help with this matter. And good luck, guys. I hope you find a suitable tenant for this restaurant.
Will I be provided a written version of that resolution?
Yes, Gary, I think we provide that, no?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll forward it. Hopefully, Antonio, you can sign that. We'll get a file with clerk tomorrow. Get the 30 days started.
Can you make the changes in the alternate? Gary?
Yep. Yes.
All right, so Mark, you'll get it sometime tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you kindly. Thank you for your efforts.
All right, guys. Have a great evening.
Take care.
I said this, but we'll do the 86 Main Street. Did we lose Heidi?
Yes.
Hi, Heidi.
Hello again.
Yes, so tell us about what you'd like to do.
Okay, so I am moving my studio, downsizing my studio to 86 Main Street and we are, I am, I feel that is, I will be just me at the studio. We are, we specialize in privates and we will also have small group classes of anything between two and four. We have this, we have apparatus, an apparatus called Pilatus reformer, and we have four of those. We are what we call a full equipped Pilatus studio. We specialize in, you know, back flexibility, core strength and such. When it comes to the space, we're changing nothing. Basically, putting just my equipment in the space and actually, Antonio, I checked that dimensions that are in that paper and that copy I gave you guys and it's correct. And what else? I'm looking to open as soon as possible because with the pandemic, things have been really hard for businesses, so. Other than that, I'm not sure what other questions might be there. Are you muted, Antonio?
So I took some notes during our work sessions and you had mentioned that primarily you provide a one-on-one instruction and then in the morning you have a group session anywhere from two to five people, article correctly, right?
Two to four, two to four, yeah.
People, right. And your hours of operation will be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday to Friday and then 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay. And you will be, I think you said you're the only instructor, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think you had said that you were getting a parking space for your vehicle in some place in the village. Is that correct?
I would love to do that, yeah. That way I don't have to rely on meters or anything like that. Just park there for the whole day.
Right. I know the village has some available, so if you want to utilize the village, I think they can provide you with one and all your customers, your clients will utilize on-street parking, correct?
Yes, they they only park for an hour, so.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Okay, um. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any other questions. Does anyone from the board have any questions on this application? Okay, by everyone being muted, I'm assuming that that no one has any questions. So at this point, I understand you are in front of the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we cannot open the public hearing at this time until you get approval from the zoning board. So hopefully you'll get approval next month. After you get their approval, you come back to us and, you know, we'll make a decision on your application.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great evening.
All right. Good night, everybody.
See you next month.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Best of luck.
Well, zoning, that's right. Okay, so the next one is 65 Main Street. The applicant here. Mary, you're muted. You're muted.
Okay, great. All right. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, good. I'm good. All right, so I have a little PowerPoint I can show you and just kind of go through it real quick with you.
Can you get access to the share screen?
I think so.
Oh.
Okay, and let's see. Give me a second. Want to. Okay. There we go. So Cornerstone Children's Center, it will be formerly Andrus Early Learning Center. So our background, Cornerstone Children's Center is located on Garth Road in Scarsdale and is licensed by New York State Office for Children and Family Services. The center opened in 2010 and has the capacity of 118 children. I'm the owner and director. I hold a master's degree in education from Sarah Lawrence University and I've worked in the field for Sarah Lawrence College, excuse me, worked in the field for more than 25 years. So our mission is to nurture children while they develop early childhood education and social skills. And it's it's known that children who attend early care and education centers do better in school and in life. So it's very important for, so a brief overview of the Tocco location, 65 Main Street. It will be licensed by New York State. It was licensed for 111 children and we plan on licensing for the same amount. The ages to be served, six weeks to five years old. The hours of operation tentatively 7:00 AM to 6:30 PM, and that really depends on COVID guidelines at this point. We do know that the masking guidelines and CDC have relaxed guidelines, but it does not pertain to schools and educational settings. So we have to really kind of wait and see what the state says on what the COVID guidelines will be. We're going to do a drop off in the back in the cutout. It'll be a staggered parent drop off between 7:00 and 9:00 AM and the pickup will be between 3:00 PM and 6:30 PM. The nine classrooms, it's going to use the exact same configuration as Andrus Early Learning Center had. And we expect to reach full capacity in one to three years and at full cap, full capacity, the staffing of 25. But that's going to grow with the child enrollment. So this is the first floor as it's configured with four classrooms and, you know, the stairwells, et cetera. This is the third floor configuration with offices, pantry, staff lounge, a library, a theater, studio, an art studio, a cafe and more classrooms for the older children. Okay, so there's no change at all to the floor. So again, reiterating ages served, sorry for my dog barking here, infants and toddlers ages zero to three years old and preschool children ages three to five years old. So the children served, infants will be six weeks to 18 months. We must maintain the ratio of one adult for four children. The capacity will be 16 infants and 16 infants, which is two classrooms. The toddler age is 18 months to three years and that requires a ratio of one adult to five children and the center was licensed for 22 toddlers. Okay, so two classrooms. The preschool children ages three to five years old. It's a ratio of one adult to seven children for three-year-olds and one adult to eight children for four and five-year-olds. So our staffing patterns will be based upon the number of children in a classroom. So we may open an infant room with three, four staff that three, four children that may only require one staff. So we'll be working on the enrollment. So what are we going to be doing? Early childhood education, practicing writing skills, arts and sciences with the children, gardening, hopefully we'll find a place that we can do that with the kids, science, et cetera. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview so you can kind of give us an idea of, I could give you an idea of what we were planning on doing, but the idea is a replication of the services that were offered by Andrus Early Learning Center with minimal changes. Questions?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's very helpful. You also provided a nice description in the original submission.
Exactly.
Basically, you're taking over Andrus's old space. You're utilizing the same program. Pickup times will be identical as Andrus. The capacity will be the same. As I mentioned at our workshop, you know, we recently had the TLE application in front of us. And one of the things that became evident from the community it was that they're very concerned about parking. There's a lot of people that are parking on our Tocco streets either to avoid paying the Metro North or local businesses. So the residents are finding it very difficult to park their own vehicles on their street. So they're kind of upset about that. So the arrangements we made with the TLE was for them to purchase some parking so that the staff will have dedicated parking for, you know, when they arrive at work. And so and I think that was a solution that worked well for for everyone. So Gary will be sharing that information with you. I think your programs are similar. I think theirs is slightly larger than yours. But the difference with theirs is they also had a little bit of parking on site, which you do not from my, from my understanding. Is that correct?
No.
You don't have any, okay, so the village is not providing any.
That's correct.
Yeah, so so at this point. Yeah, so, uh, so at this point, uh, I, I, Gary, I think you'll share that information with Mary. Right? And, um,
Absolutely.
Once you receive that, please look it over and let us know if you, you know, if you have any questions, uh, and, and I, but I, I think, you know, you know, this is a great, a great opportunity for you and a great opportunity for, for the, uh, the village, so. Yeah, I don't have any more questions. Does anyone else from the board have any questions on this application? Yeah. Okay, so, at this point, I understand you're in front of zoning, right? So, uh, we cannot open the public hearing until you get approval from zoning. Uh, you'll get approval next month, and you'll come, uh, before us, and we're having your application.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Point, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Come on.
Favor? Aye?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.